All right, we got a packed house tonight. I love to see these wonderful faces of all of our students and families. So let's get this going. So can we start with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So we had a first by Sue and second by Heidi. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Motion carries. Rokov finds us present with the absence of Ryan Berg, Madam President Mary Lynn, Su Hai and Rebecca Versi will be running a little late. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Action to the annual recognition reorganization meeting minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular board of education meeting minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, and co-session meeting minutes of May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Aye, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Motion carries. Next, we have diploma recommendations. Class of twenty twenty-three graduates, Kay and Jake.
I'd like to move that we accept the recommendations to confer diplomas to the six hundred and eighty-seven students who are listed below.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're just very happy to go.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our student representatives. We have Etood High School Liliana Heinan, Warner High School Azrael Bergy, and Central High School Brianna Jones.
Brianna, I have you here. And Liliana in the middle?
I'll give you this.
Yep. Just gotta start this.
Azrael.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening?
Good evening.
Is it working? Cool. Good evening. My name is Azrael. I'm your Warner High School student representative. We're getting closer and closer to the end of the year where finals and graduation are the most current stressors. We at Warner want the year to end on a good note, so we will be having an end-of-the-year picnic. We did this last year as well, and I had a lot of fun, so I'm really looking forward to do it again. Next year will be the start of something new for some students, as nine of our sophomore students will be, were accepted into the Rising Phoenix program. A program for high schoolers to also get their associates in arts and science before they graduate high school. I was also accepted into this program, and I am excited to continue my education. Our current Rising Phoenix students are halfway through collecting all the necessary graduate credits for their associates. Recently, we went on a field trip to three different local businesses in the area to get a little insight. We went to FEMA's Johnsonville and Kirk Joa. Personally, my favorite was Johnsonville because of all the food I got and how personable and informative our tour guides were. We learned a lot of new information, and it gave us a lot of more information on trade and technological jobs in the area. Currently, at our Maywood campus, we had some fun projects and new ideas happening in all of our classes. Over in STEAM PBL, the students are trying to make a biodegradable bone case. We've been experimenting with what recipes work the best and had a couple trials and errors. My own group is on our final prototype, so as far as we know, it came up really, really high, up to thirteen feet. In our art classes at Warner, we are also enjoying some fun projects and activities. Each month, they go to the John Michael Kohler Art Center to tour the area and do an art project with the artists that have their exhibits up. Our art teacher Kate has been working with organizations and professionals to bring in artists and others who will use art in their careers. The most recent organization they have worked with is Hope's Heart, which is a Freedom Cry project aimed to spread awareness on human trafficking. The students made several painted flowers and hearts to help out the organization. One of the projects for the school that they have done was to paint murals around our building. My personal favorite is the trees and cobbled walls painted in the art room. If you have a chance, you should really check it out, as it's a really pretty piece made by our students at Warner. With the year twenty twenty-three and quickly coming to an end, you're also releasing new adults into the world. This year, we have a total of twenty-seven graduates moving on from high school. Five of those students will earn the State of Wisconsin Employability Skill Certificate. There are a couple students who I want to put in the spotlight for their accomplishments this year. Karia Meyer, Samuel Classy, and Nolan Mattstor. Meyer earned an associate's degree in IT, Web, and Software Development from LTC. Classy finished a youth apprenticeship in manufacturing, and Mattstor will be going straight into the workforce being fully employed at Polyfab after completing his youth co-op there. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share the news from Warner High School.
How do you determine whose phone to use in the practice drop?
It's not mine.
Hi, I'm Liliana Heinan, and I am the junior, I am a junior at Etood High School. At the end of April, Etood's Great World Text class took a field trip to UW Madison, where we participated in Wisconsin's Great World Text Conference. Twenty high schools attended to this conference, each presenting a project they made based on the "There There" by Tommy Orange in a gallery walk. First, there was a presentation with the author, UW Madison professors, and a couple representatives from each school. Sophomore Matilde Guavara represented Etood onstage with a presentation of her painting. Junior Victor Ramirez participated in the Q and A session with Tommy Orange. And lastly, Junior Hunter Wakefield won a prize for his mixed meaning project during the gallery walk. Shortly after that, Etood held a community service day, where we took off the first half of the day for freshmen and sophomores to clean the beach at Deland Park and clear trails at Willow Creek. And while the juniors and seniors helped prepare meals at Nourish, meanwhile, the school was reserved for its biannual blood drive. We booked full slots almost instantly for volunteers and donors. Etood students checked in with donors, sat with them while they donated, and provided snacks and assistance after the process, and I myself donated blood for the first time. This past Saturday, Etood celebrated their spin-on prom called "More" at Paradigm. It was a seventies-themed party with live bands, karaoke, and catering from parents in Paradigm. Thank you for letting me speak this year, and it's been my pleasure representing Etood.
Ward, do you have any questions for me or for Brianna? Choir with Brianna?
Hello, my name is Brianna Jones, and I am a sophomore at Central High School. To get started with you guys today, I would like to tell you that we are sad to see this thing go this year as being a puzzle, but are very appreciative of the people who helped us throughout the rest of the year. Some accomplishments for this year are two hundred eighteen industry-recognized certifications where our tech ed department thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Three students completed their certifications, needed to be, be teachers in daycare. This was through a partnership with family connections through Mr. and Mrs. Our senior classes earned two hundred eighty-eight college credits. I'm excited that tomorrow we get to celebrate with the seniors for their scholarship events. This year, I will look forward to meet everyone. Next year, I will look forward to meet everyone. Thank you.
Any other questions for Miss Brianna? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of the school year. All right, the next portion is recognitions. Students will be recognized for awards and/or accomplishments that they have received. It's great to see so many students here with their families to receive awards. This is a joy and a highlight that I like to see, that our kids are very active and doing their greatest. So first off, I would like to call up Joe Phillips.
Good evening. So as said, my name is Joe Phillips. I'm the choir teacher at Shaboygan North High School, and I'm very proud to present two awards to two separate students on behalf of the Wisconsin School Music Association's State Solo Ensemble Festival. If you're a little unaware of what that all involves, students prepare a solo or a small ensemble number. There's a district festival. We held ours at North High School this year, and students have the opportunity to advance to the state level, which occurred at UW Milwaukee the last Saturday in April. And at that event, Isabella Rowe and Nicholas Torres received the exemplary performance award. And what that means is that adjudicators throughout the day identify truly outstanding performances at state solo ensemble, and there's a nomination process, and then following the festival, there is a selection process. So only a handful of events from each site are nominated, and even fewer are selected. Throughout the state, there have been multiple state solo ensemble festivals throughout the state, the last Saturday in April, the first Saturday in May. Only about four or five percent of the events that qualify for the state solo ensemble festival received this award. So it is a very great honor and distinction for Isabella and Nicholas. And so I'm proud to present to them the certificate from the school board, as well as a certificate from the Wisconsin School Music Association. So if Isabella and Nicholas would come up to the front and receive their certificates, that would be wonderful.
Pam, if you want to take pictures, you guys are more than welcome to come over here and take a picture of them.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kai Mills.
Good evening. Good evening.晚上好. Um, my name is Kai Mills. I'm Chinese teacher for Shaboygan North and South High School. The annual Wisconsin Chinese speech contest was held on Saturday, April twenty-second. The students from North and South High earned medals at different levels. I feel very honored to be here, present these certificates to the students who have worked very hard to earn their achievements. If these students could please come forward. Katie Alvenes. She won third place of high school intermediate high level. Julia Bergman. I want to talk about Julia Bergman a little bit, and I asked her for four medals, because she's the first student ever won first place four years in a row. And she won the she won the first place in the advanced level this year. Also, she wants to be a Chinese teacher at college. Next one, Jasmine Chen. Jasmine got third place high school intermediate low level. And Travel Graham, he got the third place high school intermediate low level. High level, I'm sorry. And Alicia Lee, she's absent. Jasmine Chen's absent. And Angela Lee, she got the first high school intermediate low level. Kelly Lee is not here. And Emily Mitchell is absent. George Phillips got the third place high school intermediate high level. And Tara Sanchez, she got a third place high school beginner level. Nadia Sis is absent. Ethan Van got a third place Chinese beginner, third place Chinese beginner level. Even and In Van, they are absent. Grace Wu. Grace Wu got first place high school advanced level. And Grace Wu, previous three years, she always received second place, but she never gave up. This year, she got first. She also wanted the and Liberty Wu, she won second place high school intermediate high level. Mei Hanli Wu, she got the third place high school beginner level. Jessica Shaw, she got the first place high school intermediate high level. Davis Yachik, she got first place high school advanced level. Hannah Yan, she got the third place high school intermediate low level. I want to talk about Hannah Yan, they got it. She wrote her own poem and was translated by a Chinese professor and published in the Bi-Lingua Chinese and English journal. So she spoke, she recited her own poem in the speech contest. Mona Yan, she got second place high school beginner level. Violet Yan and Violet Yan got a third place high school beginner level. Vivian Yan, they are sisters. She got a second place high school intermediate low level. I always remember Chinese saying, never forget people who worked behind the scenes. I want to say thanks on behalf of students, to the school board, administrators, teachers, families, and the community members for all this support us. Thank you.
Well, that was a big group there. Next, we have Frank Juarez.
Good evening. Good evening, Mary. Warren, I am the York Department Chair at Shaboygan North High School. The Milwaukee Museum hosts an annual jury, a student jury exhibition across the state of Wisconsin. And this year, Middle School and High School submitted two thousand six hundred eighty-seven works of art to the exhibition, and seven hundred eighty-nine students were selected to be a part of that exhibition at the Milwaukee Museum. And the exhibition is jury by a panel of thirty art professionals, and what they look at is merit based on originality, artistic voice, and technical skill. And so we are pleased to announce two of our students have received high honors for that exhibition, which was held in February eleventh in Milwaukee, is Charlie Anderson. Charlie received a Ciberkeen drawing. And Grace Zhang. And Grace received a gold key, a silver key, and an aforementioned campaign. Thank you.
She's already ahead of the ball. Danielle Arneson.
Thank you, team effort from Shaboygan North. Hi, I'm Danielle Arneson, who are a teacher at Shaboygan North High School. Every year, the Wisconsin Art Education Association hosts the state art show for Youth Art Month. Of the hundreds of artworks our teachers have throughout the year, they're allowed to submit five artworks to a regional show. At that regional show, this year it was hosted for our region at the Nettle Museum in Green Bay. We've had at the Shaboygan North High School Department, we had five artworks selected to go on to the state show, and that was on display in Madison for the month of March. So congratulations. I hope most of these students were here, some of them couldn't make it. Adama Carlos. William Lee. Rosie Lor. Siya Valespas. Sam Dylan Zoo.
All right, next we have Leanne Metter Jensen.
Hi, so I'm going to present the Educators Rising Award, which are people who are educators, so hopefully back here someday giving their own award. So we'll start with Emily Allen. And along with Emily for a team project, Juliana Bergman, who you just saw appear with all her Chinese medals. Another member of that team was Elizabeth Kaufman. And our other Emily, Emily Presti. We have Brooke Hess, who won her award for the leadership project. And then Grace Wu, who won for her TED Talk Creative Lecture on Mental Health in School. So all of these students qualified to go to Nationals in Florida, and they were also part of a bigger team that won the Spirit Award at the state
I'm gonna get a picture.
The twenty-two other schools for being the most enthusiastic and involved. So that's an award too.
My girls. Emily Presti, you rock. My granddaughter. Next, we have Stephanie Weber.
All right, good evening. My name is Stephanie Weber. I'm the head coach of the cheer and stunt team at Shaboygan North High School. I'm alongside Carly Havlicek. She's my co-coach. We are here tonight to recognize two senior cheerleaders for an award called the WACPC Scholar-Athlete Award. The WACPC stands for the Wisconsin Association of Cheer and Pump Coaches, and the Scholar-Athlete Award recognizes senior athletes in the sports of cheer and dance that finish their high school career with a three-point-five GPA or higher, who also show leadership in the classroom and on the mat. So we'd like to say congratulations to our varsity cheerleader Autumn Addy and our JV cheerleader Larissa Stannell on these accomplishments. It's a pleasure.
Next up, we have Jason Duff.
Good evening. My name is Jason Duff. I'm the principal at Warner Schools. Warner Schools has a strong partnership with the John Michael Kohler Art Center. And as noted earlier, in conjunction with Wisconsin Youth Art Month, there were twenty students from Warner High School who had their art featured at the John Michael Kohler Art Center. I'll go ahead and read off all of the names. I don't believe every one of our students could be here tonight to accept this recognition. But when your name is called, please come forward. Aiden Boji, Brooke Brendel, Genevieve Brendel, Angelina Shampo, Cora Dean, Emma Harden, Brett Hartley, Addison Hauser, Isabella Ignacio Klumpke, Emily Luthke, Samantha Mattstor, Amara Minoff, Hunter Mervin, Nathan Miguel, Charlene Miguel, Jada Nelson, Sophia Renieri, Lauren Sykes, Alexandra Weber, and Gavin Williams. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Lisa Herbert.
Hello, I am the Shaboygan South girls' track and cross-country coach, and I have the opportunity to present Kayla Weesa with her awards for state qualifier and state academic all, all academic state award. So Kayla can come on up here. She is a sophomore at Shaboygan South. Came out for cross-country for the first time this year and was able to qualify for the state meet by being one of the top five individual finishers of a three-point-one miles over hills and through the forest and jumping over logs and all sorts of stuff. So to be able to do that the first time she's ever come out for the team is amazing, and to be the only person in Shaboygan this year to qualify for the state meet, boy or girl, is an amazing accomplishment that she should be very proud of. She was able to get the Academic All-American, or, no, I think that was award because she does have cumulative GPA of a three-point-nine as well. So state qualifiers with over a three-point-five, I believe it was, qualified for that award. So she exceeded that and is also volunteering in our community for Girls on the Run, which is a running program for third through fifth grade girls, building positive self-esteem. So she just did a race this weekend in Nino with those girls. So, great job, Kayla.
Next, we have Danielle Callahan.
Good evening. For those of you that do not know who I am, I am Danielle Callahan, and I have the honor and privilege of being the Shaboygan North varsity head coach for dance team. This year, we had a great group of student athletes, and for the second year in a row, we are the D1 hip-hop state champions for WACPC. So I just want to recognize all of the girls for our team this year. Danica Baumann, Brooklyn Brunner, Paige Hubolz, Charity Clayborne, Isabel Cruz, Ava Doherty, Isabel Peter, Aubrey Engels. Rachel Vick, Shailin Garcia, William Hegemeyer, Luna Lee, Olivia Michael, Madison Paul, Natalie Pitner, Skylar Pockersinski, and Mary Yang. So please get up for your 2023.
Next up we have Lisa Wardy.
Good evening, tonight I get to introduce to you the 2023 Girls Division One State Singles Championship Person, and that is Juliana Bergman. Juliana has been on our team for the last four years. She was one of our senior leaders this year, and our senior girls decided that they wanted first, second, third, and fourth in all the years of qualifying. Her freshman year, we took D1 State Championship for Sheboygan North, Sheboygan South, Sheboygan Falls, Ousburg. Am I missing anybody?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. So I would like to congratulate Juliana on being the D1 State Girls Champion out of 60 girls as she qualified first and took it.
What's your average, Juliana?
A good day, 2.10.
Thank you, next we have Tom Growth.
I'm here to recognize the Ateet students from Sheboygan North High School. If you can sing, come forward. She's only a sophomore, we decided that she wanted to compete in accounting at the district level, which was held in Bayport in January, and I said, you'll be the only sophomore there. And she ended up placing third, so she advanced to the state conference, which was in Lake Geneva. 2,200 students were down there. She, I don't know this for sure, but she was probably the only sophomore doing accounting, accounting applications. And she made it on stage, she was a double role medal winner. In DECA, you do one scan front test for 100 points and two role plays each 100 points. And she was a finalist, and so she got the chance to advance to Orlando for the International Career Development Conference. And down there, there were 22,000 students and chaperones and advisors, so it was very crowded. And it was a great experience for me, and I'm so happy for her accomplishments. And the one last thing I do want to say is, she's been so quiet for a whole year, and she got her plaque at state, and she came up, she goes, I beat the people, I beat me at district. Congratulations again, sing.
Next up we have Chris Ah.
Welcome, everybody. First of all, I want to thank the school board and the leadership of the district for their support of co-curriculars. We don't take that for granted, without your support, none of this would happen, and these opportunities will not happen for our kids. I also want to thank all the coaches and advisors in this group, because their time is much appreciated, and they put in a lot of work, so I want to thank them as well. I'm here to recognize a few people tonight. I'm not sure if the first two are here, but I want to announce them and recognize them. Megan Haas and Ellie Machek, I did not see them, but I wanted to recognize them. Our coaches put their names forward for recognition, they're two gymnasts, actually both attend Sheboygan North, but they co-op with South in gymnastics. Both qualified for the state tournament this year, so we wanted to recognize them for their achievements this year. I'm sorry they couldn't make it. My next, the next group that I'd like to recognize were a couple wrestlers, female wrestlers, from Sheboygan South. If Aria could come on out, Aria Yang, and I don't believe Ellie Robinson was able to make it tonight. We wanted to, we wanted to recognize, we want to recognize both of them. Both qualified for the state wrestling, female state wrestling tournament this year in Madison. The first time that the girls have competed with the boys in Madison in the state tournament. These young ladies are trailblazers, I'm looking at, I'm gonna call you Coach Robbins, who coached girls softball in the 70s at South when that sport was just beginning, so I think you know something about being a trailblazer with female sports. So we are very proud. Aria's only a freshman, so is Ellie, who qualified for state, they're both freshmen. So we're really excited about their future, both did extremely well, so wanted to recognize them, congratulations.
Thank you, next we have Ben Crow.
Good evening, I am Ben Crow, I am one of the forensics coaches at Sheboygan South High School, and sometimes people are surprised to learn that this is not the crime scene investigation kind of forensics, but it is the public speaking sort of forensics. So it has been a pleasure to work with the team, to help them find their voices, to express what is important to them with the world, for them to give informative speeches, persuasive speeches, to perform literature, happy stories, sad stories, and stories that are personal to them. We are here tonight to recognize students who have qualified for national competition. The Sheboygan South Forensics Team competes in two different competitions. Some of our students will be traveling to Louisville this weekend for competition, and we will also be taking students to Phoenix in mid-June. So the students who are qualifying, I know some of them are here, so if you are here, come and join us. We have Paige Benish, Emma Gassi, Derek Shehan, Lucy Thorson, Eppa Valdez, Lily Wamser, Abby Wetzel, and Rain Zhang. And I would also like to give a special distinction for Rain, who was a two-time state champion, taking first place in the state tournament in the category Parago once again this year. So congratulations to all of our national qualifiers.
Next up we have Ted Ham.
Hi, I'm Ted Ham, I'm the director of the Ateet Schools, and it's my pleasure to recognize tonight the Ateet Engineers First Tech Challenge Robotics Team. They've won the Motivate Award at the Patriot Games Robotics Competition, which qualified them for state, the state competition where they did very well. The Motivate Award is given to a team who submits an engineering portfolio demonstrating team organization, demonstrating outreach, and it represents, it also shows a team that represents what they call in First Robotics, gracious professionalism. And this team, the Ateet Engineers, did an exemplary job of that. They spent hours over the summer doing first outreach to elementary school students, showing them robotics, showing them programming, both at Levitt Amp Concerts as well as the Sheboygan Maker Fair, as well as starting upwards of four different robotics teams within the Ateet Schools. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you the Ateet Engineers, starting with Kyle Bierman, Samuel Bruski, Charles Ham, Grace Ham, Gustavo Isidoro, AJ Kaufman, Kai Mavady-Madalena, Alex Moon, Comet Pastursky, Jake Perez, Cody Peterson, Kermit Fister, and Jack Recfortag. I also want to recognize the coaches for the team, that would be Courtney Kissinger, Jim Meyer, and Davina Boykin. Thank you all. I'm just gonna go one photo. It's gonna have to be a panoramic.
All right, the last one, Dawn Sizemore.
All right, last but not least, I am here to present an outstanding community service award to Christina Begum. She is a refugee student who has been sharing her refugee culture with, at South High School, and also many other schools in Sheboygan. She has taught classes in citizenship to Rohingya adults. She has had, she has helped many families in Sheboygan learn how to navigate life from a refugee camp to life in Sheboygan, Wisconsin. She's helped them with billing, banking, she's translated for job interviews. She has, we recently received five new Rohingya families here in Sheboygan, and she has had weekly meetings with seven, teachers of 17 Rohingya students. And she has done so many things for this family, these families, all the way, also doing all the things that she needs to do to graduate in high school. I've had lots of students over my time here at South, but I've never had anybody who's been such a different, made such a difference in the community. I'm so proud of Christina. Great job.
All right, let's give our coaches, our teachers, our administration, and the families that are here a round of applause for outstanding work. Now with that, we're gonna take a 15-minute recess, right behind me, we have. All right, we're going to reconvene, back to the Department of Education meeting. Next on the agenda, we have Community Input. Is there anyone here for Community Input? All right, move on, so next we have the Superintendent Report. Superintendent, how's the team?
Yeah, thank you, thanks, it was great to see everybody here, and congratulations again to all of our high school students that were recognized this evening. As you know, there are just tons and tons of great things going on in this district at all of our schools, and this is just a small portion of those kids that got recognized tonight from across, and I'll talk to about a couple in a second as well. In addition to those, again, hundreds of students 4K through 12 are being recognized over the next few weeks of the remaining school year for their academic achievements, involvement in clubs and activities, participation in athletics, music, art, drama, et cetera, at each of their individual schools, so most schools have some sort of an awards program as well. I'd also like to congratulate a few teachers. If you've been following our district webpage news, one of the great places to see everything going on, it's on our webpage under the news section, those are stories that are shared there. There are also ones that we're pumping out on our social media channels, and also sharing in various venues, including oftentimes with our local printed and online press as well. But we had a couple of great staff members, we had four that were recently added to that. So first, I'd like to congratulate Alexandra Nugent-Timofeva, who is our lead multilingual learner teacher, who received the Sheboygan Area Chamber of Commerce Top Young Professional of the Year Award. So congratulations to Alexandra. You saw tonight Danielle Arneson, for the North High Art Teacher. She teaches also at Change Academy. Danielle was named the 2023 Wisconsin Art Educator of the Year at the secondary level. Just wonderful that she's with us, and congratulations to her. And she'll be recognized and presented her award this fall at their annual event for the Wisconsin Art Educators Association. David Routman, coming off of last year's award for Kim Selby, who was our district and was the Elementary PE Teacher of the Year, and then went on to become the Midwest Teacher of the Year in PE, and got a wonderful award, and was able to take part with colleagues from across the US and be recognized as the Midwest Teacher of the Year. David Routman, Jefferson Elementary School Elementary PE Teacher, earned this year's Wisconsin Health and Physical Education, or WHPE, Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Dave. And then finally, Tim Pashi, he's the Art, I'm sorry, North High Engineering Teacher, and he was selected by the First Robotics as one of their Educators of the Year. So we've had four, in this case, three Educators of the Year for Art, for PE, and for Robotics, plus a Young Top Professional of the Year Award for the Chamber. So congratulations again to our outstanding staff, just kudos on the jobs that they are doing. Speaking of other awards, the pleasure, May 4th, to attend the 5th Grade Presidential Awards Ceremony, conducted at South High School, we recognized 95 students. That's 15% of our, of our 5th graders got recognized. The criteria for the award is a score in the top 20% in reading and math on the Winter STAR 360 Test at 5th Grade, scoring 80% or above in reading or math on the 2021 Wisconsin State Exam the Forward, and at least 90% of the report card scores have to be in for 4th Grade and the first semester of 5th Grade, have to be in the advanced or proficient areas around those items such as motivation, initiative, integrity. So congratulations to those 95 students. We packed South High School for that awards celebration, so just a wonderful night. Right now, we've got a lot of kids that are obviously. Right now, we've got a lot of kids that are obviously going to be leaving us through graduation, and Kay talked about those six hundred-plus students, almost seven hundred students. We also have students that are currently enrolled, who are going to be, you know, sophomores, juniors, and seniors that are enrolling in college-level courses. One of the programs, we've had students this year get accepted to the Rising Phoenix Program, which is a collaboration with UW-Green Bay Sheboygan Campus, which they can do dual enrollment as well. It's a little different than our Lakeland Agreement, but it's another opportunity for kids that are looking for opportunities to provide dual enrollment, and you're seeing that to become. We kind of led that, that charge in many of the things we've done with North and South and our charter schools, Central, A-2, and Warner. I'm just on the radio this morning, listening to UW-Oshkosh trying to sell their dual enrollment program. Again, we were a leader in that and a leader in the pack, but want to congratulate those We had four North High School students that completed in the HOSA Future Health Professional State Leadership Conference in Adels. The students completed an event, competed, excuse me, in events such as medical math, medical reading, medical law and ethics, ethics, and veterinary science. Two of the North students, Sarah Riddell and Nicholas Jane, qualified for the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas, which will be held in June twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. HOSA, the Health Occupational Students of America Club, is the student-led organization that provides students the opportunity to make realistic career choices, to look at employment opportunities in the field of healthcare, encourage them in, both as individuals and as a group, to participate in a variety of challenges and tasks and learning around healthcare issues, environmental concerns, survival needs in the community, really to get encouraged to engage in a medical field profession. Speaking of which, happy EMS Week to Rebecca, and twenty-fourth anniversary is what she was talking about of being in EMS, so right up your alley here. On May seventh, had a wonderful opportunity to attend the sixty-fifth Annual Sheboygan Elks Lodge, two ninety-nine, what they call the Elks Gridiron Sports Banquet. Originally started sixty-five years ago to recognize high school football players. It's now expanded years and years ago to recognize any senior student athlete who is from North, South, Kohler, Lutheran, or Christian schools. The award winners of earning letters in a sport are invited to the event. Scholarships put on by the Elks Gridiron Club and the Elks Club itself are awarded to students, and we congratulate those students. The keynote speakers have varied from year to year, and there's some people from Bart Starr to local people who have spoken at this event as the guest speaker. This year was really great to see a 2009 graduate of North High School, Kelly Klein, speak, who was a multi-sport athlete at, at, in Sheboygan North. She was actually attended the Gridiron Banquet as a student and earned a scholarship from them. She's the highest-ranking female in NFL, any position in NFL. She serves as the Executive Director of Football Operations and Special Advisor to the General Manager for the Denver Broncos. So it was great to hear her talk and hear about her experiences and what she did with athletics and turned it into a full-time career, and she was great with the kids. Again, congratulations to those students. Annually, our students with the, through the work of our physical education teachers, participated in what used to be Jumping for Heart Competition for the American Heart Association. That's changed to what's called Kids' Heart Challenge. So students from Cleveland, Cooper, A-2, Grant, Jackson, Madison, Longfellow, and Sheridan, two hundred and twenty-three students took a healthy challenge. Fifty-eight completed what was called FINN's Mission Online, which is a student, an actual student, who's been kind of an ambassador for the, for the Heart Association and has had some heart issues, and basically you took advantage and were able to compete on this mission to support FINN. That teaches life-saving skills and a hands-on-only CPR, and ways to recognize stroke within kids and adults. One thousand seven hundred students learned healthy messages such as how to drink water, moving sixty minutes or more a day, getting enough sleep, being kind and thoughtful, leadership, et cetera. So congratulations to our teachers and students. We also had the opportunity, and you heard a little bit from Don Sizemore, talking about the, to attend, and I got an opportunity to welcome at the Rohingya Community Day Event, which was Saturday, May thirteenth. I want to thank Kay and Heidi for being there. Heidi actually spoke as well, and along with Mayor Sorenson. It was a great way to share a welcome message to our families that are refugees from Rohingya, and it also allowed us to see and hear their story about how did they, what happened in their country, Myanmar, and the destruction and the end result of being told you're no longer a citizen and you lost your citizens' rights, rights in that country, and how they ended up having to flee the country, and their stories, and it was powerful to hear their stories. And it was just a great event. It was very moving. And then finally, I'd like to, just a reminder, June tenth, Graduation Day. We're going to celebrate our outstanding graduates as they walk the bowl, two p.m. on Saturday the tenth, rain date, keep your fingers crossed, we don't need that, would be Sunday the eleventh. So again, two p.m. on Saturday. If you haven't already submitted your, your feedback that you're going to be there to help celebrate our graduates, and then also if we would unfortunately end up with the two rain dates in a row, we need to move inside what your preference would be. So if you haven't yet submitted that to Jenny, please do so. That's my long report for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions for sir? All right, that was informational. Moving on, miscellaneous. Update of the 2023-2024 Proposed Preliminary Budget. Mark Belkony, Sal Harantin, Benny Enson, Jake Conrad.
Mark's going to take the lead on this. As you know, we came in April and worked through, and Mark spent the time working through the preliminary budget, talked a little bit about some assumptions that we're making across that budget, and really just for information discussion, we're back tonight, and then we'll be back again in June, the last meeting in June, in order for us to, on June twenty-seventh, to pass a preliminary budget. So I'm going to throw it over to Mark.
Okay. So again, we had gone through all these expense reductions and additions back at the last regular board meeting, so we just wanted to give the board a chance to, if there were any questions in between that time, or comments, suggestions that they could make, we want to give you that opportunity. Again, of those expense additions, a number of those are contingent on what actual revenue will be in the state budget. So when we look at any of the salary increases, those would not go into effect until we have a signed state budget, because we might have to adjust those. The proposed HRA contribution increases would not go into effect, and the Fund Forty-One increase would not go into effect. So even though we would have that in our preliminary budget, we'd wait. Hopefully, we have a, a state budget before we do the final budget in October. But when we get that revenue, we'll be back to the board with proposed adjustments based on that revenue. This budget, again, was based on a three hundred and fifty-dollar per pupil increase under the revenue limit, and then a ten percent increase in special ed reimbursement. So that's what we're basing, basing this on. So we're, we'll see what ends up being, being passed. But again, if there's any questions about the items we have in here or comments, what we want to do is come forward in June for action, and we'd like to have a preliminary budget passed in June so that we can start July first with the ability to have all our budget items in our Skyward Accounting System, so we have better controls over spending and those types of things right off the bat. So we don't want to wait till October to do that.
And then again, Mark, the, once this state budget passes, we come back with updates on where we're at, and then in October, at that board meeting in October is when we find past the, the regular budget, the final budget.
Right, yeah. So we'll, October fifteenth, they'll release state aid that makes up the, determines our tax levy for the year. So, and we'll also have our third Friday people count, which may adjust our revenue to.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone have any questions from us? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Next, we have tabulations of bids, the announcer booth. Mrs. Joe Volmer.
I'm here tonight for approval to enter into contract with Antichappa Construction for the construction of two announcers booths, one at Horseman Middle School and the Soccer Field Complex, and then the other would be at the Field of Dreams on the Baseball Diamond So as you can see, there's a little bit of a price difference in these bids, and the majority of that price difference, just so you're aware, is mostly in the concrete and some minor construction differences. Because of the length of runs on some of the concrete and electrical, I think there was just some differences in, some of it was contracted out and some of it was done in-house. So I think that's the majority of where that price difference is coming in.
What's the difference in the price difference between the two buildings themselves, between the one at Horseman and the one at Field of Dreams?
Yeah, the one at, the one at, let's see here, the eighty-two thousand versus sixty-eight thousand?
You mean between, just what's the difference?
Yeah, the physical, the structure difference between the two of them.
One is elevated. I think we're going over to the Kohler New Complex, or the football complex?
No, I don't think I've seen that one.
Okay, so they have one that's elevated probably twelve feet, the announcer's twelve feet off the ground. These are elevated probably six or seven feet, just so that you can see over top of the players that always gather in front of them. They were complaining they can't see. So that's what we're trying to do at Horseman, so that adds a lot, because we have to add footings, whereas the Field of Dreams, you don't have to have any footings. It's a, it's a much simpler project. So that added a lot to the project.
Yeah, because I was assuming that they're going to be almost identical.
No, there's quite a bit of difference there, and then just the distance, it was huge, the electrical runs, again, and that sort of stuff. The one at Field of Dreams, I think a big part of that also was the concrete, the eighty-eight sidewalks was a big deal.
Okay.
It simulates you do that, so.
No, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Volmer?
I'd move approval of accepting the bid from Chappa Construction.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, are there no other discussion? All in favor, state aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Good luck with the construction. And Mark, if you just want to talk a second while Wayne's coming up, that both of these did not go through committee, and the reason they, and we talked to Ryan about that, the reason they didn't go through committee, Mark, just so.
Yeah, because, because we're doing committee end of June, in, in next month, so we couldn't wait that long for them to get, get started. So a lot of contractors don't hold their bids for very long anymore. They, they give you a specific timeframe, the bid's only good for thirty days or something, so.
Ten days.
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, we talked to Ryan and said, let's move it forward at this board meeting, so.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome, Wayne.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to recommend Cablecom LLC to complete our fiber optic connection. This will complete our secondary fiber ring with ASB Building, which will provide us a connection that we can work on redundant data center, connection between central office and ASB, so that will be very beneficial for us in our world of cybersecurity and issues around that type of stuff, that we've got backed up, areas that we can utilize. It's also part of a board goal for Business and Operational Services that we've been working on, so Mark's been helping me along with that. We're expecting completion of this project in September of 2023. And also Cablecom was the contractor for our original ring that was joint with the city and the county, so they have experience and knowledge of our existing environment.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other, any questions for Mr. Wayne? All right, I seek a motion for authorization to enter into contract with Cablecom LLC of Glendale, Wisconsin, in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
All right, next we have Report of the Committees, Reckoning Instruction.
Okay, so we have already dealt with the diploma, and then we have numbers two and three, which are field trips. One is the North High HOSA that we talked about, Health Occupation, we're going to Dallas this summer, and we also have a group from South that's planning a field trip in 2024 to France, and I would recommend that we accept both of these.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, state aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then we just have two things for your information there that were reports that we were given, but there's no action.
I would highly recommend that if you didn't read the minutes from the committee meetings, that you review those two presentations, because they were highly informative and it really behooves us to all know what was presented and kind of get up to speed on that.
I agree.
I didn't mean to.
No, no, I didn't mean to say.
Thank you, Mark. Well, we're going to continue with you, Mark. Media Resources Committee Vice Chair, Mark Matt.
I'd move approval of number one, appointments, number three, retirements, which there were several in several years of service, so as they were listed on the committee minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Mark? All in favor? State aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then item number two, separations, and item number four was an internal transfer, and I didn't pull the notes up, I don't recall. It was a principal shift, right?
Yes, it was for Josh Costello.
Yes, yes.
Who will be going to Central High School from his current role in, at Change Academy in special education.
Yep, in special ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next we have Facilities, Recreation Theater Committee, Vice Chair, Sarah.
Yeah, we did talk about the summer Community Rec Department marketing insert that was in the Sun newspaper, I believe, is that correct? So that, all that information is also in your packets. I, I move to approve the Sheboygan Theater Company Finance Report and the Community Recreation Department Financial Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the Facility Permit Report was also included in your report, for information.
Thank you, Sarah. We're going to continue with you for the Finance and Budget Committee.
I move to approve one through four, Fund Forty-One Capital Project, Statement of Cash Flow, Revenue and Expenditure Reports, and the Budget Revision and Transfers of Appropriations. and the Budget Revision and Transfers of Appropriations.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the rental of the garden plots. Again, we go ahead and rent out the land to the Mung Association, Mung Mutual Association. So I move that we approve that land rental agreement.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, was that for Wolf Plots, North and South Side?
Just for the south side.
Just the south side only because of the freighter work that's still going on on that property, so forth. And we, knowing that that timeframe is coming up here, wasn't sure if it.
If it would affect the growing season.
Yeah, it would affect the growing, potentially. So we're only renting out the south side near Optimus Park.
All righty.
Thank you. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, and then we have the District Transportation Contract. We did meet with Priggy, and we have a really great relationship. And we have Dennis, and we have Jason back there. We have such a great relationship with Priggy that we've extended our contract to the 28, 2028 to 2029. We have included increase of a dollar for the drivers for next year, going from $19 to $20. And I believe that language was added into the contract, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it's part of the, so the, the contract's going up roughly 8%, and that's accounting for the, the $1 raise for the drivers.
So I move to approve the District Transportation Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
That was curious. Did we have any success in recruiting any of the coaches to become drivers for any of the, any of the bus? I thought there was discussion on that.
No, not any coaches. Wade Hyden, the musical teacher at South High School, was the only person to come in.
Okay, I thought there was somebody, so I was just, I was curious. Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, and then we have gifts. I did want to go ahead and highlight one, the golf sets from the Kohler Company that donated to the elementary schools for FIDE, and that was in a donation of $20,000 of golf sets.
Wow.
So that was a really great. Can I have a motion to approve the gifts?
I'll second your motion.
You're doing well, Sarah. First time out of the gate.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's a great gift.
Very good. All right, thank you. Next is the Committee of the Whole, there was nothing to report out for that. Next, we have the Special Board Committee Assignments. This is Sheboygan Public Education Foundation, Heidi Mayber and Seth Harbinger.
The minutes of the Sheboygan Public Education Foundation are in your packet. It was great to see Heidi there as the first time, a brand-new board member and serving on that committee. So Heidi, anything you wanted to share about what's there?
Um, I think the thing that I think will affect, I don't know, I'm sorry. Something that was interesting is that one of the high schools has asked the date of the announcement of the recipients be moved forward so that the students have more time to use that information for their financial packets before they sign with the college. And it seems that there, there's some discussion about how that's going to work. So that, that's kind of complicated.
Thank you. Was that it for you guys, for Smith?
That would be it for Smith.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Human Growth and Development Citizens Advisory Committee, Ms. Kay.
Okay, so again, the minutes are in your materials here, available to the public as well. We had our meeting by Zoom. We are attempting to have our next meeting in person in July. Eric, did, did it ever get narrowed down based on what people could do for a date?
We're still, we didn't have enough people to have a quorum for any of the dates that we threw out there. So we're still working on a date.
All right.
How are you?
Summers are busy.
Yeah, summer, July is a very busy time, a lot of people. Okay. There was nothing else that was actually acted on. There were a number of things that were discussed, and you can take a look there, from aims, what we're trying to move forward, benchmarks, what new content we might have, and what the next steps are. But we encourage people to let us know if there's some things you'd like us to consider. We do have some hard copy materials that are available for checkout. I swapped some out tonight. So if we have people in the community or on the committee that would like to take a look, those are available. But nothing was actually acted on.
I'll just, if I may, I'll just plug in on the news section of the school district website. You'll again see a plea for, from now until June 30th, for additional members to join the committee. So that's there and posted also inside our webpage under Human Growth and Development as well. So two different spots there to, to get new members to join the group.
We are definitely lacking a student space that I think might be a middle school teacher.
All right, thank you, Kay. Next, we have the future meeting dates, this is for information. June 13th, 2023 will be the committee meeting session at 5:30 PM. And June 27th, 2023, the committee meeting at 6:00 PM, and the regular board meeting following that at 6:30. I seek a motion to adjourn the closed session per Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19, Point 85, Section 1, Section G, to review the information from legal counsel regarding notice of circumstances pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, A-93, Point, or A-80, Section 1D, Section A, received by the district.
So moved.
All right, we're going to do a roll call.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Now a roll call.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.